You're muted, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Manager, it appears that Council Kennison is in the attendees. Could you bring her over to the panelists, please? Great to see everybody. Welcome to the July 13th, 2020 electronic meeting.
We are meeting electronically due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic in accordance with the Governor's new news emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. Please note that in accordance with the Governor's emergency order, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on our agenda at the City of Concord's website at conquernh-ledstart.com backslash calendar dot A S P X. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the City Council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, and the public has access to listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through clicking on the following website address. U S zero two web dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight nine four two five nine one eight three three three. If any member of the public does not have a website access, they may dial the telephone number of one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. If dialing from a landline, you may call toll-free at eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven. The webinar ID is number eight nine four two five nine one eight three three three. For those of you who want to provide public testimony in a public hearing portion of the meeting, you are connected to the Zoom website. You may click on the raise hand icon on the attendee section and make the request. When the time is appropriate, you'll be recognized by me and you can provide your testimony. For members of the public who are participating by phone, you may dial star nine to alert me that you want to testify. We will not be using the chat function in the Zoom for this meeting. Please note that the testimony is only allowed for the agenda items that have been selected, scheduled for the public hearing, and public participation is not authorized for any other item on the agenda. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call six zero three two three zero four six one nine or send an email to citycouncilmeeting@concordnh.gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking the roll call attendance, and when you state your presence at the meeting, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Bouchard?
Here, home alone, in a room, at my home.
Mayor?
Present at my office, alone.
Councilor Champlin?
Present in a room in my home, alone.
Councilor Fantasy?
I am in my office by myself, although I can hear vacuums of a cleaning crew just outside my door.
Grady Sexton?
I am present. I am at my home, and I am currently alone in this room.
Councilor Hatfield?
I'm here alone in a room in my house.
Councilor Keach?
Home alone. I do my own vacuuming.
Councilor Kennison?
Present in my home, alone.
Councilor Credit?
I am in my home, in a room by myself at the moment.
Councilor Matson?
I am home, and I am alone in this room.
Councilor Nyan?
He's excused. Sorry about that.
Councilor Pierce?
Present at home, alone in this room.
Councilor Rice Hawkins?
Present and home, alone in this room.
Councilor Todd?
Here at home, alone in this room.
And Councilor Warner?
I'm here alone, here in this room.
Thank you very much, everybody. So, if you could all join me, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
United States.
The United States of America.
States of America. To the republic.
For which it stands. One nation. God. Under God.
Give it up.
As well. Liberty. Justice. As well.
Thank you. And Councilor Pierce, thank you for the flag. We have one, two, three, four sets of minutes before us. If, without any objection, I would like to take all four sets up at the same time so that we have to call the roll one time. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna--
Can we seal the minutes? Can we seal the minutes of the non-public session as well?
I was gonna do that in-- right after this.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. So, first thing, we'd seem no objection to take all four up together. So, we have the minutes of June 8th, 2020, City Council before us. We have the minutes of June 15th, City Council. We have the minutes of June 22nd, City Council, and the minutes of June 29th, City Council. So, is there any comments about the meeting?
Move approval.
You made it seconded. Councilor Rice Hawkins, did you have something?
Yeah, I had one edit to the June 15th minutes. On page 13, it says that Council Rice Hawkins addressed the council about making a formal statement. It says that I referred to an all-council email sent last week which contained a proposal, it should actually say, which indicated she would be pursuing a standing.
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody object to that change? Okay, seeing none. Does anybody have any other changes or comments regarding the minutes?
Move approval with the change made by Councilor Rice Hawkins.
Thank you. I'll follow up with my second. Perfect. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
I did, thank you.
Okay. With that, seeing no other changes, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please? That'd be great.
Yes. Councilor Bouchard?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Councilor Champlin?
Yes.
Councilor Fantasy?
Yes.
Councilor Grady Sexton? Councilor Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilor Keach?
Yes.
Councilor Kennison?
Yes.
Councilor Credit?
Yes.
Councilor Matson?
Yes.
Councilor Pierce?
Yes.
Councilor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
And Councilor Warner?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and the motion is adopted. Councilor Credit?
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion to seal the minutes from the non-public session.
Thank you very much.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been duly seconded. Any comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Councilor Champlin?
Yes.
Councilor Fantasy?
Yes.
Councilor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Councilor Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilor Keach? Councilor Kennison?
Yes.
Councilor Credit?
Yes.
Councilor Matson?
Yes.
Councilor Pierce?
Yes.
Councilor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
And Councilor Warner?
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Okay, great. Having unanimous motions adopted. That takes us to item seven. Item seven is a City Council action relative to the City Manager's evaluation in accordance with Section 21B of this City Charter. And before we discuss it, I thought it would be helpful just to read the sentence from Section 21B of our City Charter. It simply says, "After such evaluation, the City Council shall determine in public session whether the City Manager's overall performance in office has been satisfactory or unsatisfactory." "The City Council shall also establish the City Manager's compensation for ensuing year." And we'll be taking that up later on in new business. But do we have a motion for satisfactory or unsatisfactory on the manager's performance?
Your Honor, I move that we give a satisfactory rating.
A second.
Hatfield.
Motion made by Councilor Credit. It appears to be seconded by everyone else. Is there any discussion? I guess I'll just start and simply say that, much like I have said in the past, that I think it's a bit unfortunate that the City Charter limits us to satisfactory or unsatisfactory because I don't think it captures the job that the manager has done. The manager, in my opinion, has done an absolutely outstanding job over the past year. Not only have we continued to be a role model, I think, for the state of New Hampshire in terms of budgeting and award-winning budgeting, but I think when you look at the number of services which are provided and the level of the quality of those services, it's been absolutely outstanding. And I think you don't need to look much further back than how the city responded to the COVID pandemic and how we so quickly responded, not only in terms of services, but financially, to see us through that. I also think Tom is a-- and I'm gonna call you Tom. This is one of the few times I'll do that. But you have been a role model for this community. I think your leadership has been outstanding. You have assembled a team around you, which is, I think, second to none across the state. And so, I will thank you for your services past year, and I think you've done a satisfactory job.
Satisfactory.
Council-- Council Fantasy?
Thank you. And I want to thank the City Manager. Obviously, I haven't been here for the full year, but I've been very impressed in my short time on the council, particularly the response to the pandemic and the manner in which I think the city has done a very good job in a very tough spot. I've been impressed by your dedication, the extra time you've put in, and your ability to respond very quickly to circumstances that changed, it seems, sometimes on an hourly basis and if not a daily basis. So, certainly, if we could add superlatives to satisfactory, I would certainly do that. Thank you, and I look forward to working with you during this next fiscal year.
Thank you. Council Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like at some point to revisit the City Charter and revise this one-year contract because I just think that's really unfair to ask someone to work year to year. I don't know what that looks like, but I think it's important. But we have a good City Manager. We want to hang on to him, and year to year is like, would you want to work like that? So, let's look at that somehow sometime.
Thank you. Council Champlin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too bemoan the fact that we can only use satisfactory or unsatisfactory because, as Council Fantasy indicates, this is one case where we really would benefit from a lot of superlatives. You know, they say that in a crisis, the person that you want to have at your side is the person who keeps his head or her head and who acts coolly and decisively. And I think that in the curveball that the COVID-19 crisis has thrown to us in many ways, Tom has been that cool-headed person, has responded quickly, has responded effectively and efficiently, and formulated a budget for us in the current fiscal year that is realistic, but I think probably flexible, which is needed. I also have to say that, you know, there are reasons that Concord consistently ranks among the most desirable small cities in the United States on a variety of levels and a variety of surveys. And a great deal of that credit has to go to Tom and the team that he's put together and the good work that he does. So, thanks very, very, very much, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Council Hatfield?
Thank you. I'd like to echo a lot of the things that have been said, including Council Keach's comments. And I also want to thank the manager for all the help he's given me. As someone who's new to the council, your level of responsiveness and that of your staff is really amazing. And I don't think it's just to councilors. I think it's also to the public, and it's very much appreciated. I also really appreciate your ability to take feedback, to seek out from us what our needs are. It's really appreciated, and I agree with the comments about the job that you've done in this crisis that we're in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Pierce?
Council Hatfield said a lot of what I wanted to say about being a new counselor, and I just want to thank the City Manager for the continued guidance. And any successes that didn't happen were my fault, not his. So, thank you very much for your guidance.
Thank you. Council Grady Sexton?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Tom so much for another extraordinary year. I think that he is an unbelievable leader for this community and for his staff. I know they are all very grateful for him, and we're just very lucky to have you, Tom. So, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Anyone else? Tom, do you have the mask on? Are you holding back the tears? Is that what?
Thank you all very much. It's really has to do a lot to do with the staff, and you can see they're all-- most of them are on the attendees list and participate during the meeting, ready to go and support me and back me up with all the things that I don't know. But really, working with this council has been fabulous, as it has been for the last 21 years. Not that I've been manager for 21 years, but it's been a great time. I love the challenge, and I look forward to another great year. And I think we have some good things we're gonna get done tonight. And actually, I got some more great information to share with you as we get to the end of the meeting. So, I'm ready to go. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Motion been duly seconded. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Bouchard?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Council Champlin? You were moved-- you did, Council Champlin, but I'm guessing you said yes.
I said indubitably yes.
Thank you. Councilor Fantasy?
Yes.
Council Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Council Hatfield?
Yes.
Council Keach?
Yes.
Council Kennison?
Most definitely yes.
Council Credit?
I am also a yes.
Council Matson?
Yes.
Council Pierce?
Yes.
Council Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
And Council Warner?
Definitely yes.
And with that, the motion is unanimously adopted. Congratulations, Tom. Thank you so much. That takes us to our consent agenda items. I do believe item 24 has been removed from the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
To accept the consent?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have Council Pierce seconded by Council Champlin. Is there any discussion? Council Rice Hawkins?
I think we just need to update the public safety report. It looks like the attachments for last year's versus this year's annual report. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Council Grady Sexton, are you okay with that?
Yes, thank you for catching that, Counselor.
Perfect, thank you. So, with that one change and all but item number 24, we have a motion to adopt the consent to calendar. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Council Champlin?
Yes.
Council Fantasy?
Yes.
Council Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Council Hatfield?
Yes.
Council Keach? Council Kennison?
Yes.
Council Credit?
Yes.
Council Matson?
Yes.
Council Pierce?
Yes.
Council Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
And Council Warner?
Yes.
With that, motion's adopted. That takes us to our public hearings this evening. Madam Clerk, if you could read item 38, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $21,527 for police department runway-- or, excuse me, roadway safety initiatives and accepting the sum of $21,527 in grant funds from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
As our attention to continue the valuable relationship with highway safety, it allows us to place additional police officers and equipment in the field to assist in continuing efforts to address traffic concerns and make our roadways safe. To recommend the City Council authorize the department to accept these dollars from the Highway Safety Agency listed here for the Police Department roadway safety initiatives.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing on this item and see if anybody would like to testify. I have no one on the attendee list raising their hand, but I didn't know if anybody had dialed in star nine. Is there a delay? Do we need to wait tonight, or?
Sure. There's a delay right now. We'll let you know when the delay is over.
Okay, thank you. All set. Okay, seeing no one wishing to testify, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, if you could read item 30B, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $456,000 for the design and engineering of a multi-lane roundabout and ancillary improvements at the intersection of Hoyt and Whitney Road, CIP number 30, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $456,000 for this purpose. There was a revised resolution submitted, and I believe 17 items of public testimony should have been received.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Byier will present.
Thank you. Baye?
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. So, as you know, Whitney Road is a city street in Pennacook, and it's home to a handful of largely industrial developments. Whitney Road's only outlet is onto Hoyt Road presently, which is also New Hampshire State Route 4. So, it's governed by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. The DOT has indicated that any new significant traffic generator on Whitney Road, in other words, any new private development that really generates a lot of vehicle traffic, would not be permitted because the existing intersection of Hoyt and Whitney currently doesn't have the capacity to address those future needs. In effort to overcome this, the city and local landowners, Laurie and David Rossio, who own a significant portion of that sort of upper end of Whitney Road, have attempted for nearly a decade to include this intersection in the state's 10-year improvement plan, the STIP. Unfortunately, the DOT's position is that the present conditions do not negatively impact Route 4, and that any improvement to the intersection with Whitney would only be needed to accommodate, in their opinion, private development. So, that's the reason it's never gotten onto the state's plan. Because it's not on the state's plan, the state has basically told the city that they were not going to commit any dollars to this project. In an effort to further this project and try to resolve the situation, the city council allowed us to commission a study in 2019 to look at what would be needed to improve that intersection. And what was found was that this was going to be an extensive project because there are not only impacts at the intersection of those two roads, there are also impacts at the intersection of Hannah Dustin Drive and Hoyt Road, which is actually, that intersection is in the town of Canterbury. There will also be impacts to the I-93 on-ramps, as well as other impacts on Whitney Road itself. The study that was concluded last year estimated that the project could cost as much as $5 million, depending on what alternative was selected. So, based on that cost and the extensive coordination and expertise that would be required to successfully manage such a complex project, we felt that it's really unlikely that this would ever be built solely by a private developer as a condition, for example, of a site plan, off-site improvement. It's just too many moving parts, really, to make that all work in that mold. So, staff have been in discussions with the Rossios for quite some time about this matter. Without an improved intersection, Whitney Road, in all estimation, will remain an underdeveloped corridor and will deprive the community of future tax base and jobs. In 2019, the Rossios participated in their own right, they commissioned a comprehensive traffic analysis of the intersection to determine what type of improvement would work best. And their study concluded that a multi-lane roundabout would be preferred, and this past May, DOT also concurred with that finding. So, what we have before you this evening is a recommendation that council consider funding a design and engineering contract for up to 100% of the design of the intersection and all the related improvements that go along with that intersection. But because we also don't know the full magnitude yet of what will be in that design and what the ultimate cost will be, we felt that we needed a provision in there to allow council to check in. And so, we've added a clause that at the 30% phase, our consultant would submit a 30% design, which is a very detailed design, would have grading and drainage and all the elements, but will also allow us to present you with a project budget that will be very granular at that point and something that we would feel more confident about. And then, council, at that particular juncture, you could decide, yep, continue, let's go forward with this project and with this design. It could also start having conversations about what we need to do to potentially fund the actual construction of the roundabout and how that would work with the partners that we would have, the Rossios, the Market Basket, State Leglet. Those are all entities right now that are in the mix with this particular project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Who has questions for Mr. Baye? Counsel Hatfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of questions, and my first one is, I wonder if Mr. Baye wouldn't mind just explaining the changes in the revised resolution because I didn't get a chance to look at it before the meeting.
Certainly. So, in the original resolution, there was a reference to RSA 162K, and that unfortunately was the wrong RSA. It was actually supposed to be 33:9. And so, that correction was brought to our attention, and that is the reason why you have the revised resolution.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up?
Please.
In your memo, which was very helpful, thank you, on page two, you talk about historically, and you just referenced this, that historically, folks had contemplated that the design and construction would be a simpler intersection and that it would be entirely funded by the private sector. But then, I think you talked about, once the project is actually ready to be built, that there would be a variety of partners. And so, were you getting at the idea that once it's ready to be built, that there would be private sector contributions so that it wouldn't be just a completely publicly-funded project?
It's a great question, Counselor. I think that's a decision, obviously, will end up being largely the council's responsibility. I think if you ask us administratively, we feel that there would be a role here for the private sector. Because if, for example, Market Basket built a new supermarket facility anywhere in New Hampshire, they would likely anticipate paying for some off-site improvements. So, what we're saying with this report, I'm hoping to, I hope now, I've illustrated for you, is that this one is just very complex. And because of that, I think we're probably going to have to have a role as a city. But I would fully anticipate and expect that our private sector partners would have some financial contribution.
Do you mind if I ask another follow-up, Mr. Mayor? You might recall, Mr. Baye, that there was an op-ed several months ago about a desire in the community to ensure that the new intersection was safe for folks who are biking or even folks you might want to access or need to access the area on foot. And I was wondering, would those issues come up at this point, or would that be something that we would look at later?
So, in the preliminary designs that we've already done as part of our capital project, that's already been approved by the council, we've done some initial schematics. Those have all taken into account full pedestrian improvements as well as full cyclist improvements. I will tell you, the pedestrian improvements in that area are a little bit tough. I'm not sure if the DOT will actually accept those just because of the sort of outlier area and the mass volume of traffic that approaches that intersection. For example, if you did a multi-lane roundabout with that much volume at peak hours, the crosswalks may not function in a safe manner. So, those are things that we're going to have to take a look at. Our intention is for those, for that infrastructure to be included. But again, it will have to be up to the permitting agencies to agree to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one more, if you'll let me.
Sure, please.
Just in terms of a precedent, for those of us who are newer to these issues, can you give us an example of another situation where the city stepped in like this to try to help facilitate a challenging situation because of the overall benefits that we saw?
Well, I think you could probably point to most of our projects, particularly in our downtown area. I mean, if you look at any of the development that helps revitalize, what people define today as the revitalized downtown, I think the city has been involved. And if you go back historically, you know, at least until the late '70s, early '80s, we were involved in the garages downtown that helps spur additional redevelopment. The Main Street project in general, we participated in building infrastructure that really helped the private sector in terms of providing wider sidewalks, which today, for example, are being used because of COVID by our restaurants. So, I think the council has a very long history of doing this. It's just a question of degree. How involved will you want to be, what kind of commitment will you want to be? And that's always on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. And I realize I did have one more, Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me. So, with the worst-case scenario, if we say no-go, we would have spent 30% of $456,000, so that would be $150,000. So, worst case, if we have to stop or we decide not to proceed, we would have invested that much in this project. So, that's part one of my question, if that's correct. And then, secondly, if we did stop at that point, do you think that the funds that we would have spent, the work that was done, would be useful for the future?
So, I wouldn't necessarily say it's 30% that way because I can't speak to how the engineers break out their workload. That first 30% design could be very intensive, and so, there may be more hours involved. So, I wouldn't say it's necessarily a dollar-for-percentage breakdown. Obviously, we've had some expenditures over the last several years in the CIP that the council's approved. They've been relatively minor in the grand scheme of things, just to move things along. We did some survey work. We've done some initial schematics, as I laid out just a few minutes ago. So, we, obviously, there would be some initial investment. If you chose to say, we don't want to pursue this, that would be obviously your choice. And I don't think we would have lost a tremendous amount of resources. Obviously, you'd want to avoid losing anything, but this is, you know, you're trying to get to a certain point here. As to your second question about would we have any utility, I think, for the work we've done to date, absolutely would. We've got the survey work that's been done, and the 30% plans are going to be, like I said earlier, those are very comprehensive plans at that level. So, if you wanted to pursue this later on, if that, if you chose not to do it now, but if you wanted to have it on the shelf, I think you potentially could do that. I think that the challenge is, as I believe you know and the community knows right now, is that the developer indicates that there are some tenants that are ready to go to address a need. I'm not sure if those tenants would be there in the future.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the time.
Thank you. Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. Baye. With respect to the design, is it, is my understanding correct that we would be making a contribution towards the initial design, but that design still is subject to approval by the state?
That is correct. So, any, this is a state road, so we're working collaboratively with the state of New Hampshire on this project. In fact, what we're trying to do right now is, the initial schematics that we've generated, we will basically provide those to DOT for some initial sort of greenlighting, if you will, to say, yes, you're on the right track, go ahead with that plan before we even go to the full 30%. Because the last thing we'd want to do is design this, you know, entire sort of corridor at 30% level, and the state says, no, you missed something, we don't like this at all. So, that, we're going to work very closely with them.
Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make sure that I express my appreciation that you're going to include bicycle access as well as pedestrian access. Long-term, when we look at the Merrimack River Greenway Trail, Whitney Road actually connects into what they envision as being that portion that connects to the Bosquin Town Line and the trail, the Northern Rail Trail, of course, through the Concord Monitor, the Heritage Trail, everything. And I think that that's an important piece to that last section of their efforts, even though our focus today is really on the cornfields and how we connect at Terrell Park to Loudon Road. The longer plan is that 14-mile access. And so, I appreciate you including that because it is really critical as we look at development in that area, that the Merrimack River Greenway Trail stay a part of that effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, seeing no further questions. Actually, Counsel Fantasy, do you still? Okay. So, with that, we'll open the public hearing on this item. And who do we have would like to testify? Mr. Manager, I'm going to look to you to, actually, we have Ms. Rossio. Could you please unmute Ms. Rossio to testify? Hi, you sure can. How are you? Welcome.
Good evening. Laurie Rossio and David Rossio here. Just wanted to make sure that you received our public testimony. I think it's in the new packet you might have received today, along with other testimony received from the public in support of this resolution, and to see if you had any questions for us.
We did receive it. It is all part of the public record. Thank you very much. And with that, does anybody have any questions of the Rossios? Seeing none. Thank you very much for making yourself available tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Mr. Manager, do you have anybody on the phone? Okay. So, with that then, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move to our action phase. Madam Clerk, item 31, please.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $21,527 for police department roadway safety initiatives and accepting the sum of $21,527 in grant funds from the New Hampshire Highway Safety.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made by May Protem, seconded by Counsel Grady Sexton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ready for the question? Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counsel Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kennison.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Mattson.
Yes.
Counsel Pierce.
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hopkins.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
And Counsel Warner.
Yes.
Okay. With that, have we received the necessary two-thirds? Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 32, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $456,000 for the design and engineering of a multi-lane roundabout and ancillary improvements at the intersection of Hoyt and Whitney Road, CIP number 30, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $456,000 for this purpose.
Todd, move approval. Before you do that, can I just get, so, can I get a motion on the revised ordinance?
Move approval?
Second.
I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to recognize Counsel Todd for the revised, adopt the revised ordinance, and second, Counsel Grady Sexton.
Thank you.
With that, we are open for discussion. Counsel Fantasy, can you have your end up?
Thank you. So, I think this is a good project. I think we should be supportive of the project. I think it is also important, though, you know, obviously, to participate in the design phase and make sure we can coordinate with all the stakeholders. But I would encourage us, as we move forward, to make sure that all of the stakeholders make a contribution to this financially as we move forward.
Thank you. Counsel Champlin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Counsel Fantasy's point is well-taken. It would be good to see involvement from all the stakeholders. I think this is a very prudent way to move forward. I like the fact that we're moving to a specific stage, the one-third point, and then revisiting this. But I think that the development of this parcel of land and the whole Whitney Road area is so critical for expanding the tax base in the northern sector of the city. And I think that it is so significant in terms of expanding the tax base and the economic activity in the city as a whole, that I'm very, very pleased to see the city engaged at this point and trying to find a solution, you know, without the participation of the state. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counsel Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just will be supportive of this for all the reasons that my colleagues just mentioned. And I also just wanted to add a thank you to Mr. Baye and everyone else on city staff who have put in a lot of hours combing through the details and figuring out a plan that I agree with. Counsel Champlin really is a well-thought-out plan to allow us to continue to oversee this project as it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hatfield.
Thank you. I want to echo the comments of Counselor Fantasy. And I also want to thank Counselor Todd for the incredible amount of time that he's put into this. And I hear from a lot of people, a lot of support for trying to get a grocery store and related other things in Pennacook, so really appreciate all of his work. And my hope and dream is that this location really is accessible to people, not just in cars. I think there are a lot of other places where grocery stores and other related things are located that really are not safe for people outside of cars. And with the vision of... hope that we use this as a chance to, to learn from the past and, and to really try to make this area safer and more inviting for people in, in a variety of modes of transportation, and, you know, thank you to Council Kretovic for pointing out how important this area is for other recreational goals. So thank you for everyone's work, and I, I hope we can really focus on that in this project.
Thank you. I have no other hands raised. Anyone else wishing to say something before we move on? Council Warner.
Thank you, Your Honor. I couldn't agree more with what Council Hatfield was putting forward in terms of the potential for this development to be a real showcase in so many ways, because we're starting with a blank slate. And so in terms of transportation, public access, certainly, energy, charging stations, I know there's discussions on all these fronts, but I, I'm hopeful that the partnerships that we're talking about this evening will really lead to a state-of-the-art showcase system as to way things ought to be built in the 21st century, and as a, as a really strong example of leadership in the city of Concord and regional.
Thank you. Council Pierce.
I, I too want to thank Council Todd for all his hard work, and, and I'm sure everyone knows this is important to the residents of Pennacook and the folks certainly in Ward Two to have access to this, and I look forward to voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, nothing else, I'll just, I'll just comment, as I look out my window, I see a rainbow. I don't know what it means. Looks like the other end could be in Pennacook. Maybe that's a good sign. So with that, we will, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Council Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Council Champlin.
Yes.
Council Fennessey.
Yes.
Council Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Council Hatfield.
Yes.
Council Keach.
Yes.
Council Kennison.
Yes.
Council Kretovic.
Yes.
Council Matson.
Yes.
Council Pierce.
Yes.
Council Rice Hopkins.
Yes.
Council Todd.
Yes.
And Council Warner.
Yes.
Even necessary two-thirds, motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, that takes us to reports. Item 33, please.
It's a report from the General Services Director recommending the procurement of leaf loader attachments for fall leaf collection.
Mr. Manager.
You know, members of the council, you have a report from Mr. Chester. Since the preparation of the budget, the community's been engulfed, as you know, in the COVID-19 pandemic, and that raises potential health concerns for general services staff to effectively perform the fall bulk leaf collection program using our existing tube-style leaf vacuums, and that was pointed out very succinctly by Council Kretovic during the budget discussions, amongst others. So the task requires, as you know, three crews of four or five staffers to perform labor within close proximity, day in and day out, for several weeks. So we're looking, we've been looking for a way to reduce that, that potential conflict, and one of the opportunities we have in front of us is that we could purchase trackless, four-trackless leaf loader attachments to our existing equipment. The estimate to cost procure those four attachments is $185,000. There are sufficient funds in CIP 121, which is your equipment budget, to purchase all those, you know, with dollars that you have already appropriated, so to be no new money that would need to be appropriated, and no tax increase associated with this. It's money essentially generated from the sale of existing equipment and the dollars we receive from that, and good buys we've made in the market through Equipment Service Division, General Services, to buy equipment at good prices, that has left enough dollars to be able to cure this equipment. Well, just because you have the money doesn't mean you necessarily want to spend it. So, but it, there is enough money to do it without raising additional taxes. But it's another reason to do something like this besides the fact that you have the money and the fact that it's a good way to protect employee health, is that there's annual maintenance costs associated with the existing vacuum tubes using this. So on an annual basis, we're going to continue to spend $35,000 a year maintaining what we have. There is, in the next two fiscal year budgets, FY '22, let's take the FY '22 budget by itself, you need to replace three of those pieces that you have now. The cost for that is $276,000. The following year, you need to replace the last piece, which would be the fourth piece, for $95,000. In addition to that, we have a salvage value, if we were able to sell the existing pieces of equipment we have, for about $20,000. So if you put that in perspective and look at the numbers, you'd have a one-time cost savings of not having to buy those four additional pieces of equipment over the next two years. That equipment is going to cost you $391,000. If you subtract $185,000 to buy the new four, four pieces, you'd still have a savings of $206,000 over the next few years to do this, plus annual savings of $35,000, because you wouldn't have to do that annual maintenance on those existing leaf, leaf collection systems you have. So not only does this make good financial sense, it makes good employee health sense, and also should improve the efficiency of our ability to pick leaves up, help us move a little faster, I hope. So I recommend that you do this. You do not need a, a vote to a public hearing to undertake this. We need, if we want to do this for this coming fall and have this in place, we need to order the equipment this week. And so the opportunity is in front of you, the savings is there for you, and I think the employees would appreciate your taking advantage of this and protecting their health. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Council Champlin.
Thank you, Your Honor. City manager, do I understand correctly that this equipment would allow leaves to be picked up, mulched, and, and carried away even with snow on the leaves?
Yeah, that, that should work. Yes, sir.
Notwithstanding the fact that I know that when the snow starts to fly, we put the plows on the trucks, would this facilitate a more complete removal of the snow than we have now with the, with the vacuum system?
But that's what we believe will happen, yes.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pierce.
A quick question for the city manager. Would the city be an early adopter of this type of equipment, or does it have a proven track record of good operations and maintenance?
This has a proven track record. It is existing equipment that is out there in the market, and is not something we'd be on the bleeding edge of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, I want to commend you and your staff for going back and looking for a solution to this. This really was a very deep concern of mine for our staff and that exposure, especially because we were taking this up in the heart of COVID-19, not knowing results were going to be in, in the fall, and knowing and having seen what that crew goes through in order to do the leaf pickup. It is intense manual labor. They are in close proximity to each other, and I, I really appreciate the efforts that not only did you go to, to find a solution to this, but you found one that is economically, it appears to be more sound than what we have today. So I want to make sure that your staff is aware of my gratitude. Thank you.
Be sure to pass that on.
Thank you. I think Council Hatfield had her hand up earlier. Are you all set now, or?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Manager, let me ask you, so first of all, thank you for the cost savings. That's always great. Well, the flyer that you provided the council in our package, the last sentence of the brochure says, "Rain, snow, or cold weather won't affect your operator or the leaf loader's ability to pick up leaves, even if they are stuck or frozen in the pavement." So you had me at hello. But my question to you is, are you going to suggest to the community that there's no longer a need to have to bag the leaves in the fall? Because now, the concern for bagging leaves was always people who were left to the end, even to ensure that they got their leaves picked up in, in case it snowed early and all. So are you saying now that we no longer have to bag the leaves because we're all set with this new equipment?
No, I'm not saying that, and I think what I'd like, manager, was, right here, black and white. I would like to go through a couple, a couple of seasons with this and actually try it out, make sure it actually works the way we want it to, and increases that efficiency. And I think, I think it'd be always good to have that program as a, in reserve just in case, so, which is why we're buying four instead of three, so we'd actually have that backup in case something did happen with one of the units. But I'd actually like to test it on our roads first and, and see how it works to make sure that we do get that increased efficiency.
Mr. Manager, if it works as well as it says and advertised, I think the people in Ward 10, the people in Ward 7, the people on the outskirts who sometimes are last to have the leaves picked up, it's good to know the snow will not prevent the leaves from being picked up anymore.
Love your optimism.
Anyone else? Okay. So is there a motion to accept or approve the report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the report. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Council Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Council Champlin.
Yes.
Council Fennessey.
Yes.
Council Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Council Hatfield.
Yes.
Council Keach.
Verdi.
Council Kennison.
Yes.
Council Kretovic.
Yes.
Council Matson.
Yes.
Council Pierce.
Yes.
Council Rice Hopkins.
Yes.
Council Todd.
Yes.
And Council Warner.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion's adopted. Look forward to fall leaf pickup. Should be fun this year. Madam Clerk, item 34, please. Do you wouldn't mind reading that?
Yes, it's a report from the Assistant City Planner on behalf of the Solar RFP Selection Committee regarding the solar installation at the Hall Street wastewater treatment facility. There was also a communication from Council Warner submitted in your request agenda this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Council Kretovic. I'd like to go through this report with you in a little bit of detail because it is, it is pretty complicated, but very well done. Beth Fenstermark, Assistant City Planner, did an excellent job working with her committee on this and working with Beacon Integrated Solutions, who was our consultant, Beth Greenblatt. So I'd like to go through this briefly. Based on the city council recommendation to move forward with further analysis and potential award of the revision energy to include a sizing of facility that would avoid shutdown risk and allow the city to still pay for additional power needs under competitive market price, prices, and provide a net positive financial outcome, saying all that, down at the Hall Street wastewater treatment plant, we continued our analysis on looking at what it would take to make a facility like that happen. So following that approval, Revision provided a refreshed alternative proposal that was analyzed by Beacon Integrated Solutions and the Solar RFP's selection committee. The revised proposal is for a 720-kilowatt DC, 480-kilowatt AC system that includes power purchase option and a pilot payment term for 25 years. Refreshed alternative proposal reflects costs associated with vegetative management, financial impact associated with the reduction in the project's size, because there's a lot, there's a loss of economies of scale, and the reduction in the federal investment tax rate from 30% 2019 rate to 26%, which is the 2020 rate. The revision proposal did not originally include perimeter fencing. However, the selection committee strongly recommends that perimeter fence be required to protect the solar assets and limit the city's liability. The updated analysis prepared by Beacon, provided separately under supplemental information which you have in your report, presents a summary of the four power rate structures relying on the pricing provided by Revision. So if you look at those, you have those in front of you, the only option that provides economic benefit over the term of the agreement is the 25-year option without perimeter fencing. The Solar RFP selection committee reviewed the updated proposal analysis. As noted, the committee strongly recommended that perimeter fence be required with a separate entrance for Revision, and the reason for that is the wastewater treatment plant, as you know, does no longer operate in a 24/7 situation where there's always employees at the site. There used to be three shifts. Because of technology, we've been able to reduce that down dramatically to one day shift, and that saves, through general services' great work, that saves the rate payers a tremendous amount of money and receiving the same service with a more technologically advanced plant. If the additional security fence is not construction, constructed, Revision requires access to facility off-hours, the city will need to provide overtime for staff, be available for the duration of the maintenance visit. So when the recommendation from the committee, which you see in your report, is that it's desirable scenarios to have a 25-year term with perimeter fencing, however, looked at that scenario and said it's not economically feasible, and the cost for the perimeter fencing, I have trouble with that word, it's about $55,000, and that came from Revision Energy. So looking at that, and knowing that how much we do really want to do a project, I called Dan Weeks from Revision Energy and asked him to, to look at this with me, and I proposed to him that, given the information I know, that this is a relatively small facility, and the fact that this would be a situation with small investors, they generally, and Dan confirmed this, they generally have a lot more flexibility than a larger investor in putting, structuring a project. So what if we took the approach of going with the scenario of the 25, 25 years without the perimeter fencing? However, had an agreement that we, we could come to understanding on that if maintenance needed to take place at the site, that it would take place during regular hours of operation of a wastewater treatment plant, and that most, and most of the work, according to Dan, could take place in that, in that timeframe. However, if there was a situation where work needed to occur after hours, and we did not want somebody roaming around in our secured site, that we would be able to bring somebody in, and then the Revision or whoever, the project was sold till down the line, would bear the cost of our employee cost associated with bringing somebody in and making sure that our site was secured and the operation was not impinged in any way by any work being done at the Revision facility. And he said that was absolutely possible. There was no issue with that, and we could come to an agreement with that. So being that those, that those costs, you would not need to put the fence in, and those costs would be borne by Revision or any other company that was purchased from that, we're back to the 25-year without perimeter fencing, which the committee believed was viable and makes sense. So looking at that, the, that would, that would completely cover our city staffing costs, an agreement would take, would be put into place. We can anticipate additional savings if the project's approved as an economically responsible initiative to undertake at this time, given existing circumstances, and set a good example for continued progress in the community with our sustainability initiatives. So if I look at all the pieces in place, I think this covers the costs associated with us, the educational element, the environmental initiative we do want to do, the reduction of our carbon footprint, and actually a hedge on additional cost increases that could be potentially in the energy market as we move forward. So I think this checks all the boxes that you wanted us to do, and I recommend that you go forward with the proposal of the 25-year agreement without the fencing, and that I, I go forward and award this to our Revision Manager. Glad to answer any questions.
We have a question for Council Pierce.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, quick question. As part of the economic evaluation, was the diminishing efficacy of the photovoltaic cells taken into account? You know, after 25 years, they're at a certain percentage of their, they're toward the end of their shelf life.
Yes. So, hold on a minute. So we look, one of the things we looked at was...
I have a question for Counselor Pierce.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, quick question. As part of the economic evaluation. Was the diminishing efficacy of the photovoltaic cells taken into account? You know, after twenty-five years, they're at a certain percentage of their, they're toward the end of their shelf life.
Yes, so, hold on a minute. So we look, one of the things we looked at was. What would happen after the twenty-five years and would we be able to decommission? And make sure that we weren't stuck with any additional costs. And of course. We have the potential along the line, I'm not sure exactly what year it is off hand. To be able to purchase this facility and make sure that we're doing it in a way that does not. Leave us with costs at the end and looking at it from the standpoint of. Can we, are we stuck with it with equipment that can no longer be used? My understanding is the technologies got to the point where they can either be refurbished or we could dispose of them in a way that would be. Environmentally responsible, but who knows in twenty-five years? I, I'm not that concerned about that piece of it. I'd be concerned if this was a much larger facility. And I think that would be, that could be problematic if we were looking at a five megawatt array of some sort. But four hundred and eighty kilowatts is not something that I'm necessarily concerned with.
Hey, thank you. Counsel Warner.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, to expand on what the city manager was referring to. Those calculations are included into any analysis and, you know, the solar project. In these times is expected to last at near full capacity for close to thirty years and well beyond that in practice. And of course, we know that the technology will continue to improve. And, you know, this project I expect will be of a longstanding nature. Also, keep in mind that if we are at some point in the relative near future, successful in. Keeping safe policy, which this council has consistently been in support of. That that facility can be expanded, added on to. And of course, we can move forward with other projects, but that is part of the calculation in terms of. How the project would operate over the long term.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that. Somebody like to make a motion that based on the new information that we can go forward and install the solar project?
That's in whose approval?
Yeah, motion made by Counsel Warner, seconded by Counsel Mattson. Any further discussion? I guess I'd just like to add a thank you to Counsel Kennison and Counsel Warner and. I can't remember who else was on the initial committee, but it was chaired by Counsel Kennison to look at solar in the city and. I think it's nice to see. See something actually come through and after it's been a while, but it's nice to see something move forward. I think it's the right direction. And I also like to thank you to Beth Fenstermacher. Who put in a whole lot of work and was, was always there for the committee. So I greatly appreciate her efforts as well. I have Counsel Hatfield and I have Counsel Warner.
Thank you. I also, I thank you very much to the city manager for the, the creative thinking. I think toward the end of this to try to make it work. It's very much appreciated and. And I echo the mayor's thanks to Ms. Fenstermacher and to the committee. I know a lot of work went into this and it's pretty exciting. So thank you.
Counsel Warner.
Thanks, Your Honor. I want to thank, Your Honor, you very much for your support over such a long period of time and, and setting up that initial committee. And our city staff has worked very hard and planning in particular. On this and many other sustainability projects. And so we very much appreciate their. Their work and the work of our consultant, Beth Greenblatt as well. We're all working very, very well together and this is approved of that. Thanks again for the innovation.
Okay, with that, I don't see, I'm sorry, Counsel Kennison.
Yeah, I just want to say, though I was the chair of the initial committee, we kind of kicked this off. The heavy lifting has been done by the current committee. I just wanted to thank them for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, seeing no further comments. We do have a motion. It's been seconded. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, yes.
So if you could call the roll, please?
Yes, Counsel Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counsel Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach. Counsel Kennison.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Mattson.
Yes.
Counsel Pierce.
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
And Counsel Warner.
Yes. And with that, the motion is adopted. Thank you very much. It takes us to new business. I have two items. One, I referenced earlier. And that was when we approved. The manager's satisfactory motion. I mentioned that in the charter, it also requires us to negotiate the terms of the contract for the following year. So if you might indulge me, I just want to go over quickly. The changes so that the public is aware. And of course, once this is approved or I'm assuming it's approved. Then it will be a public document and. It will be readily available to, to anyone who wishes to see that at the clerk's office. So this contract is identical with no changes in salary with the following exceptions. There, we, the manager has agreed to move to a high deductible health plan as many of the other employees in the city have. The retirement contribution changed from nine point five to ten percent. And the unused annual accrual leave was increased from sixty to seventy days. Those are the major highlights in the proposed contract. And I'll open up to any comments or a motion.
I'll move approval, Your Honor.
I will second.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Champlin, seconded by Counsel Kretovic. Is there any comments? Seeing none, raise the question. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counsel Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kennison.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Mattson.
Yes.
Counsel Pierce.
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
And Counsel Warner.
Yes. With that, the motion is adopted. You're stuck with us for another year, Mr. Manager. Okay, I did have one other item on our new business. This is not, should not be surprised, anyone. When we adopted the budget, we said to the public and to the city that. We would be doing periodic check counts with how the budget is doing. And as you all know, we just completed or the process of completing the July first tax payments. So with that, I was hoping the manager could give us a quick update on. Those tax payments as well as any other revenues updates you can give us.
Yes, I'd like to have Mrs. Lebrun give us a brief update.
Mr. Lebrun.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. On July first, and that's actually revenue that's collected for FY twenty-one. With the tax collections due July first. We received ninety point three five percent of the taxes that were due to the city. Harrison purposes last year, one year ago, that was ninety-one point seven one percent. So we're about one point three six points off of where we were last year. Very good, in my opinion. I thought that we were going to be much, much lower than that. To put it in dollar cents for this collection period, that's probably about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's really not too bad to be off. I do expect that number to probably grow up a little bit. As we finish the tax collection for the July first due, due date for the taxes that come in. In the next couple of weeks or so, so. But I think that that was a very good, a very good collection rate that we had this year. So now my mind is actually going to start worrying about October first, so. And we'll, we'll bring that back to you when we get to October.
Any other revenues you could comment on or? I think that's the most important one, but I didn't know if there was any other we want to highlight.
The, the only other information that I would highlight is just some of the FY twenty information. And that is some of the revenues that have come in for FY twenty came in a little bit better than what we were projecting. The big one is motor vehicle registrations. We had budgeted that at about seven million eighty-one thousand. That's coming in about seven point one million. So we're about twenty-five thousand better, which is very good. We didn't have as much of a drop off as what I had worried about. The state money coming in from highway block grantions and meals, those all came in as expected. Actually, ambulance charges came in better than we expected. So we had about a million five, a billion nine fifty budgeted. And that's come in at about a million, two, two million forty-four thousand. So. We're about a hundred thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars better there. So. The area where we did suffer a little bit more as far as revenue goes is the recreation department. We were about two hundred thousand dollars less in revenues in recreation because things pretty much closed down. There, but most of that was made up by a reduction in expenses in that area too. So. We, overall, we had expected that the general fund, what I had been reporting. A surplus of about two hundred and sixty thousand. I think that might be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I have to, I have to qualify that. We do have a number of year-end adjustments that still have to be made. And we do have a year-end tax adjustment that has to be made and we wait until the end of August to do that. So that could fluctuate that number some, but overall, it looks like we're coming in somewhat, you know, better than what we had originally anticipated when we first went into the whole COVID issue. So glad to answer any questions.
I have two other questions, but if somebody else wants to ask one before me, please. So I know this is a pretty quick turnaround and you may have not been able to really do much of a deep dive in this, but. I'm just curious, first of all, that is outstanding news, in my opinion, to only be off by. One point three percent or points. So that, that's great. Did you get the sense that it's mostly the commercial folks who were not able to? Is that where you saw folks not paying? Or was it their combination of commercial and residential?
It seems to be a little bit more commercial. But not to the, not as widely as what we had anticipated it would be. You know, we did take a look at a number of commercial properties and a number of smaller businesses. And, and most of them had paid their taxes when they were due on July first. We do have a number that, you know, we anticipate will come in in the next thirty to forty-five days. You know, there were a few larger properties that, you know, certainly are somewhat delinquent. But it was a little bit more commercial than it was a private or a single family homes.
Okay, I just had one last one. In terms of the CARES Act money. And we, the state set aside the forty million, I think our share of it was a million. How have we been doing with reimbursements?
We, we have the second round of that that is being submitted that's due on Wednesday. So we, we are working diligently to make sure that any expenses that are related to that are going through. We have approximately two hundred thousand dollars overall that will have been applied for. As we go into this next, this next application. Also have, keep in mind too, we have that, that money from the CARES Act, but. We also have money that will be coming back to us for the first responder payments. We've also got some FEMA money and then we also had a few other dollars that came in as reimbursements for Medicare too. So we'll be bringing a supplemental appropriation back to the city council retroactive to June thirtieth. That details all the funds that were coming in and the revenue that's expected to offset it. So. We'll, we'll have that either in August or September for the council to take action on again, retroactive to June thirtieth.
Thank you very much. Counsel Keach.
Brian, do you have a rough idea? And I hate to be on the spot, but like, how many city positions have been unfilled?
Right now, I think we have about thirteen or fourteen that are still vacant. We have some that we've remained, held vacant purposely as, as we discussed during the budget process. There were a number of other positions that just either are taking longer to fill or we're kind of going slow. Because we wanted to see how the tax rate collection was coming in. And again, we'll be prudent in what we're doing. So the manager is really looking at the positions and. Classifying them as the level of importance in order to get that particular position filled. It would be a shame if the, if the October payments came in and we were significantly off and then we had to let somebody. You know, a reduction enforced because of, because we had hired somebody sooner than what we really needed to. So. Watching that pretty close, but we have about thirteen or fourteen positions that are still open.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? None? Thank you very much. I appreciate that update. Really appreciate it. I know unfinished business coming off the table that I know of. So that moves us to our comments request by members of the council. Anybody wishing to have anything they'd like to share? Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request and also a question to the city manager. I'm getting a lot of questions from parents who are getting concerned about what the start of school is going to potentially look like. And so my question is, has there been any outreach or contingency planning with any of the Concord School District or. Merrimack Valley with you as to, you know, potential, potential things that the recreation department might be able to do if, if kids are not in. Classes full time in September?
Great question. The, the, trying to set up a meeting with the new superintendent, as you know, is the new superintendent of schools of Concord School District. To see what, what they could use for assistance and we have contacted Concord School District to see. Is there anything we can, since we can provide at this point and the Merrimack Valley School District. Talking to Mark McLean up there. They, they're still waiting for a lot of information from the state. And the direction the state and the governor is going to give them in terms of opening schools in the fall. So they're trying to do as much pre-planning as they possibly can, given the information they have. I've offered any assistance that we can. Our part. And they said, thanks for now, just hold on until we have a better understanding of what we can actually do. Based on what comes out of the state and then we'll sit down together and figure out if there's a role for we, that the city can play. And of course, if there is something we can do, I would bring that to you and see if there's something we can do to help out the. Both of the school districts and the children.
Thank you. Counsel Fantasy, do you have anything else? That's it? I do not. Thank you. Counsel Hatfield.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a question for you. At a prior meeting, we had talked about, or some of us had voiced our interest in. The council exploring some work around anti-racism, diversity, equity, inclusion, training or resources. And I just wonder, do you have any thoughts on that at this point? And is there anything that any of us can do to, to help move that along?
I really greatly appreciate the question. Working with the folks to try to put together a program, had plenty of conversations. One of the, the, I think, one of the challenges we're just going to have to work with is, is the way we are dealing with each other right now through the Zoom. I was hoping and truly fingers crossed that we'd be able to do some of this in person. It feels like it's not going to be able to be able to do that. So instead of waiting to a time when we can, because I'm not sure what the fall is going to look like. I'd rather get started sooner or later and we just may have to do it through Zoom calls. I think if we do it through Zoom calls, this is simply my opinion and I welcome anybody else to chime in. But I originally had, we originally discussed, including planning board, zoning board, school board, et cetera. I think with a, with a Zoom call, that it may be better if it's just us to start. Because I think if we get too big, it's going to become unruly and it will lose the effectiveness that I think we're all looking for. So. Due to, unfortunately, due to the technology, maybe it's just us and hopefully we can get started soon.
Great, thank you. And if I could, I wanted to thank Counsel Grady Sexton for convening a discussion about. Police issues at the last Public Safety Advisory Board meeting. And I didn't know if she could comment on any follow-up work or future meetings or, or is there anything that other counselors could do to be helpful? Because I know that the interest in talking about those issues really remains high in the community. So. Wanted to express that and offer support and thank her for that meeting. Where members of the public did weigh in and I, it kind of proved that the Zoom does work and can be accessible for people. So. Thank you to, to Counsel Grady Sexton.
Well, thank you and thank you to everyone who.
Um, well, thank you and thank you to everyone who participated and to, um, certainly the Concord Police Department as well. Um, I think we had a really robust conversation and we are going to continue to have conversations. We're going to continue to meet monthly as a Public Safety Advisory Board. And each month, in addition to referrals, um, from the council, we're going to address a, a particular topical issue. So, um, I believe our next meeting is on the twenty-seventh, Monday, the twenty-seventh, if that's, that's correct, at three P M. And, um, will also be a Zoom meeting and will also, uh, each discussion will be, um, will welcome, uh, community input. So.
Thank you very much.
So thank you.
Uh, Council Warner.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I wanted to relate to, uh, to folks today. I had a conversation with, uh, City Clerk Bonoff. I was number one, wondering how she was feeling about looking ahead in terms of the election, primary, general, in terms of the massive requests that we're going to see in absentee ballots, uh, vote. And, um, you know, she really put my mind at ease and I think we should all be very, um, comfortable with the fact that how we're going to be able to handle this as the city, both in terms of the city clerk's office and any pulling in any personnel, resources that are going to be needed. Because we are going to be seeing a very serious increase in absentee voting. It will be interesting to see how we, you know, do in the primary, um, on September eighth as the warm up for the general. But one thing that we did discuss that I thought was a very good, uh, opportunity and, and, uh, the city clerk agreed is, you know, we as city counselors are going to, I think, get an increasing number of, of interactions, requests from our constituents about voting in this age. And we know that there's a bill that was passed by the legislature recently that's on the governor's desk that will clarify the absentee voting process should be signed very soon by the governor. But I thought that, uh, when I introduced the idea to, to the city clerk and she reacted very favorably to us, it would be good if we had sort of a, a resource sheet to make sure that when people ask us and our constituents ask us about voting, as it becomes more on their mind as we get close to election time, that we have that, uh, as a resource to make sure that we are imparting, um, accurate, uh, information to our constituents. So, um, I think that will be forthcoming, but, uh, you know, I think we all should be, uh, proud of, uh, of I think how we'll do and, and how we're getting ahead of this already and looking, looking towards, um, a very different kind of election day. So I appreciate all the work of the city clerk and, uh, and I think having that information in front of us that we can be confident we're, uh, be able to tell our constituents the right information is a good thing to do.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Council Chapel.
Your Honor, and I want to thank Council Warner for, uh, raising the issue of absentee ballots and, uh, the great job that our city clerk is doing. Um, I just wanted to use the opportunity to, uh, emphasize to folks that indeed the Secretary of State's office has, um, a rule that, uh, fear of, uh, of, uh, exposing oneself to COVID nineteen infection is, uh, a sufficient, uh, reason to, uh, request an absentee ballot for the September eighth primary and the November, November third general election. Um, but I also note that, uh, and, and much of this information was in the city manager's, uh, weekly newsletter on Friday. Uh, but I do note that the Secretary of State is urging people to apply now or apply soon. Uh, so, uh, I just want to make sure that that information gets out to the folks who might be watching this or might be watching, uh, reruns of city council. Uh, if you're interested in, uh, voting absentee because you're concerned about, uh, you know, what situation might be in September and November relative to COVID nineteen, uh, please do visit, uh, the Secretary of State's office site. Uh, all the information is there. Uh, and please do apply for your absentee ballot. Also would just mention that it is possible, if you're not registered to vote yet, it is, uh, possible to register to vote, uh, by mail as well. So all that information is on the Secretary of State's office, uh, site. Thank you, Your Honor.
You, uh, I don't see anyone else's hands raised. Anybody? Just to put a bow on the election piece, um, not only has our clerk been, uh, out in the forefront on this, but I also think it's important to recognize Mr. Kennedy and the Solicitor's Office who have also, um, who has, uh, worked in a great tandem with, um, the clerk's office. Um, we are in communication with the Secretary of State's office. Uh, there is a series of questions that we have, um, that we need to, uh, to get to, uh, the bottom of. And, uh, I, I think we have the right team to, to get the answers. So, well done. Okay. Having no one else, um, Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, we have no suspense items. Uh, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order before we, uh, take a motion adjourned?
Can we have something?
I would like to suggest we take up item number twenty-four.
You know, you know? Well, I actually got out my new revised agenda. I would have known that, but because I'm using the old agenda, my apologies. I'm sorry, sorry. Uh, so with that, uh, I'm going to turn this over to Mayor Protem, uh, to take over and take up suspense item, uh, twenty, not suspense item, I apologize, uh, to take up item twenty-four, there's a move for the consent agenda. So with that, uh, and I'm doing that because of complex, uh, rule six A. So Mayor, uh, Protem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please, uh, read, uh, consent item twenty-four? That was moved from consent by Counselor Pierce.
Absolutely. It's a report from the city solicitor in response to the council referral to the legal department regarding the city's authority to enact a firework, firework, and as you stated, it was pulled from consent by Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, City Manager, would you like to comment on the report?
Certainly. If you go to page two of the report or folks at home goes to page two of the report, the city solicitor, uh, outlines really four different options to look at. And so you have a option one, which is to restrict the display and possession of consumer fireworks to certain hours. Option two, authorize the display and possession of consumer fireworks by permit only. Option three, prohibit the sale, display and possess, and or possession of consumer fireworks throughout the city. And option four, prohibit the display and possession of consumer fireworks on city property. And then of course, a, a fine system that goes along with that. So the question here before you, um, that you, you should discuss is whether any of those four options is something you would like the city solicitor to draft up an ordinance for related to that particular option. Let, answering any questions?
Any questions for the city manager? Uh, Counselor Pierce, your hand is up?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, thank you, Mr. Manager, and I want to thank the city solicitor for the, uh, very comprehensive report. Uh, the reason I asked to have this item pulled is I am requesting that the city solicitor's office prepare an ordinance for a public hearing that will restrict the display and possession of consumer fireworks from the hours of ten P M until ten A M. And to hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance at the next scheduled city council meeting, currently scheduled for August tenth. Um, I look forward to hearing comments from the public and, uh, any and all debate. And the reason I've done this, I, I've passed around a few of the emails I've had. Um, we, you know, when we talked about this at the, uh, May meeting, there were some reasons why we thought, uh, that there was an uptick in this, but, uh, I'm not a big favor. I'm not a big fan of regulation, but I see this more as a, an issue of respect for our neighbors. Uh, I had sent around to you the noise ordinance and, um, really the, the biggest part of it is thirteen dash six dot one that talked, it says it shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue or cause to be made or continued in excessive unnecessary loud noise, which either annoys, disturbs, injuries or endangers the comfort, response, the repose, health, peace or safety of others within the limits of, of the city. I don't want to get in the way of anyone's fun, but I think, uh, there's a right time and a wrong time to do it. So, uh, I would ask for support from the council to move this forward, uh, and, uh, under the guidelines I just mentioned and have a public hearing on that ordinance at the next meeting. So I will, uh, make that as a motion.
Is there a second to Counselor Pierce?
Field seconds.
Okay. Uh, motion made and seconded by Counselor Hotfield. Uh, discussion, uh, Counselor Fennessey?
Thank you. Actually, before we get into this discussion, I had a question for the solicitor. Um, my understanding is that currently fireworks could be regulated under our noise ordinance, uh, under thirteen six one. It, am I missing something or, or is there an issue with respect to, uh, using that provision to, to regulate these fireworks?
I think there's certain, uh, evidence that, uh, make thirteen six one, uh, more of a challenge, uh, for regulating it, but certainly it can be. And I think the counselor has cited, uh, a section of thirteen six one that may be used, uh, for regulation. Um, we also have, as I mentioned in my report, the disorderly conduct statute, which, uh, the police department is quite familiar with. Also be a means for regulating, uh, the misuse of fireworks. Um, but insofar as, you know, there's a number of towns, and if you look at that community wide list, uh, throughout this, uh, state, Department of Safety together, you'll see that, uh, you know, what towns have done, and there's a, you know, range. And I've, I've listed the four here as to what towns have done, ready to, uh, regulate fireworks. Um, and so it's really up to, uh, the council. Um, I know that the, um, safety board has looked at this a couple of times, past councils have looked at this a couple of times. Um, you know, so this is what you can do. Um, we do have a state law and a noise ordinance in effect, uh, right now. Um, whether that would, noise ordinance or state law would be, um, less effective than a, uh, an actual fireworks ordinance. Um, I guess we'd leave that up to the police to make that determination. Um, but we do have, uh, state law and ordinance right now, um, that may be used to regulate fireworks.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Kennedy, right now, I, I would presume if, you know, someone's got loud noise, playing music at a certain hour, the noise ordinance is, is the hook that the, the police use to show up at somebody's house. Is that accurate?
Um, yes, generally, or the disorderly conduct, uh, statute, which I think might address something like that appropriately as well. But I'm not seeing much in the way of, um, noise ordinance prosecutions, uh, these days. I didn't speak with my city prosecutor about that and that's just not, I don't know if there are not complaints to that effect, but we're not seeing much in the way of, of, uh, violations of that ordinance.
Further questions? Counselor Fennessey?
No one else said. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Keach?
Yes. Thank you. Um, uh, so Mr. Kennedy, just to clarify for me. So city ordinance can't supersede state laws. Is that, is that accurate?
Uh, well, to the extent that there was a state law that, um, outlawed our city ordinance or you can't certainly have a city ordinance that contradicts state law, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah. I'm just saying, I'm just thinking aloud that like, this is like overboard. It may be, it's a, it's a, it's a state issue and, and it's a state ordinance that needs to be passed, not, not on the city level.
Well, just so I'm clear from my report, um, the state law makes it clear that it's up to the localities to regulate.
Okay.
Look at the, that long list of what, I mean, you know, some have decided to regulate and some have decided not to regulate. Some, uh, local boards, the team of all.
Gives the municipality to, to en- enforce whatever they want, basically.
Right. It's really in the hands of the municipality.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, yes, uh, Counselor Pierce, I very much appreciate all the efforts that you've put together, um, in speaking with different people in this regard. I know there's been a ton of different recommendations that have come from varying interests within the community to talk about, uh, fireworks in general. I do, um, I do like the, uh, recommendation that you're making here to at least start, have a starting point with the, uh, ten P M to ten A M time limit on this. I do have a general concern that's going to come down to enforcement by our police department and how it is that they are going to enforce this. Given that, as Counselor Fennessey has already pointed out, this could have been covered under the noise ordinance for those instances when someone is shooting off fireworks and we'll say three thirty in the morning. There is also the other portion, which is if the force, if our police force is tied up in another event in the city, they're not going to show up and this may not be resolved. However, I'm in favor of it proceeding to, um, a public hearing. And, uh, potential adoption is a good first step to resolve some of the issues that we have in our city, um, for that fireworks going off after ten P M when we're trying to get some sleep and all that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Kennison?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, in the ordinance that your, your Counselor Pierce, you're ass- asking to be drafted, there's no mention of a fine. And I wonder as part of that ordinance, if we could put in a dollar amount that we could, at least it would be in the ordinance and we can make a recommendation as to how much that would be.
If I can take that question, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Counselor Pierce, yes.
Yeah, that was, I had, uh, looked at that and as it says in the city solicitor's report, that is something that we would have to consider, but I, as I thought about it, uh, I think that's premature to talk about a fine amount, uh, at this point. I, I think after we get input from the public, um, you know, if the public comes out strongly against this and we decide not to adopt it, then I guess the amount of fine is moot. So this is really just the next step to get it over where we can have a discussion and take the ordinance apart. I don't know if the city solicitor plans to put this in the noise ordinance or some other ordinance. Um, I just chose one of the four that I thought would be the least obtrusive, uh, to the public and, and have people come in and, um, let their thoughts be known. So I hope that answers your question. Thanks.
Counselor Hapto?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, this is a major issue in my ward and I really appreciate Counselor Pierce bringing this forward. Um, I'm not sure this goes far enough and I won't get into the merits now. We can talk about it at the hearing. Um, but I, I'm very concerned about the fact that we have no limits on people lighting off fireworks on public property. It's a major issue at White Park. Um, it's also a major issue at the Grepone Ball Field. Um, and not only does it disturb the peace and, um, cause issues for, for other residents, um, it also could be in the summer like this, a major fire hazard. Um, so this is something I, I'm really looking forward to hearing from the public about. Um, and I want to thank Counselor Pierce for, for bringing it forward. And I, I will say that, um, in talking with officers and response to complaints, um, right near where I live, the noise issue hasn't come up. So I'm planning to actually just follow up with the chief around why, uh, why, why we don't take advantage of the noise ordinance, because that would also give people a tool. Um, even if we were to restrict the hours, it would also give people a tool to address what in some neighborhoods is unfortunately an ongoing issue, um, at all hours of the day and night. Um, so I think, I think if nothing else, this, uh, this hearing hopefully could, could raise, uh, the issue and maybe educate people about, um, you know, the tools that are available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Matson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I also have, have not, um, I appreciate the opportunity for us to have public input on this. I think the only concern I have is in terms of the actual enforcement of it. So my concerns echo, um, Counselor Kretovic. echo Counselor Kretovic's comments. I noted that I was in Manchester, I note Manchester has prohibited fireworks, and it was very imminent on 4th of July, going on for all hours of the night and all day long. So whether it's prohibited or not, it's going to happen, and the question is, is what, what do we do in terms of the response? And I guess from my point, and I'm not belittling the annoyance factor for sleep and, and maybe even safety in some, in some instances of tight quarters, but that combining with issues with other policing calls. So it's one of those things where I wonder, in theory, it sounds great, in practice, I wonder how it will work. So that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Todd, comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. My comment is that I'm always going to be in favor of letting the public speak on any issue, including this one. And so I think it will be interesting to hear from folks and see what they have to say. I do recall a lot of public testimony when I was on the Public Safety Board, and this issue was discussed several years ago, so hopefully some of those folks and others will come out and participate in that. So I'm in favor of moving it forward on that score, but I'd also like to ask Mayor Protem if it would be possible to ask Chief Osgood a question at this point, if he's available for that?
Is the chief on?
Yes, we'll see if we can move him in. I just, I just cautioned you about getting into a public hearing.
Hearing, yes.
That's what you're doing, but you're, you're okay, but I wouldn't go too much further.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counselor Fennessy, your hand is up, do you have another comment?
I do, but I'll defer to Counselor Todd asking a question of the chief first.
I don't believe we have the chief yet, do we, city manager? Oh, there he is, he just popped up.
There he goes, okay.
Thank you. My, my question, chief, is a question that was formulated tonight by the city solicitor. He was wondering whether or not a, an ordinance such as what's being proposed would be any more or less effective than the current ordinances that we would have on the books, such as the noise ordinances, in terms of being able to actually police the matter. I'm wondering if you just have any quick or brief thoughts on that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think it remains the same, actually, because generally when we go to these particular calls, the crowd or the persons involved have dispersed, and we're left with evidence of fireworks that were set off. We don't know if they're deemed permissible or non-permissible, but we just never seem to find the people. Under this ordinance, I guess I would defer to the legal department, whether or not this ordinance could include, or if possible, include that the, the property owner, you know, be eligible for issuing a citation if, if nobody takes responsibility. I'm not sure if that's the direction that can be, or you can go to, but that, that would certainly be a benefit for us for enforcement.
Thanks, Chief, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Counselor Fennessy? Your hands up, Counselor Fennessy?
Yep, it looks like the solicitor has had his hand up before, so I'll defer to him.
I was gonna go to the solicitor after all the council comments.
Fair enough, okay. So from my perspective, it seems to me that this is really more an enforcement issue than whether we have the appropriate ordinance. And so I, I would not be inclined to move forward in creating a new regulation if the issue is primarily one that relates to whether or not we have the ability to enforce what we already have on the books.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I believe the motion is to have a public hearing on a proposed ordinance, is that correct, Counselor Pierce?
Yes, it is.
City Solicitor Kennedy, your hand is up, comments?
Right, I just wanted to make clear to the council that Counselor Pierce's motion is to have a public hearing next month when we don't have the current ordinance before the council. So there's no issue, the legal department can certainly draft an ordinance within the timeframe prior to the next council meeting. However, we would need to suspend the rules of the city council to have a public hearing on the night that the ordinance is brought before the city council. Usually, it's a two-month process for a city ordinance as opposed to a one-month. So I just want to bring it to the council's attention that to the extent that we do have a public hearing next month, there'll have to be a suspension of the city council rules.
Counselor Pierce, would you be willing to amend your motion to have the public hearing at the September council meeting?
Would we do it at September, or do the public hearing in August and vote on it in September? I guess I misunderstood.
So unless the council rules are suspended, which you have the authority to do as a public body, ordinances are presented to the public a month prior to the public hearing on the ordinance.
Okay, I understand. No, I do not have a, I will amend my motion to have the proposed ordinance published and by August 10th, and then have the public hearing in September.
Counselor Hatfield? Counselor Hatfield?
Yes, my second is on the amended motion.
Okay. I'm sorry, my apologies, Counselor Rice-Hawkins, I didn't see your hand up. Sorry.
You're fine, it was, it came later on anyway. I just wanted to thank Counselor Pierce for his work on this, and it sounds like there are some questions and considerations from various perspectives, so I appreciate the opportunity and support, the motion to have a public hearing at September meeting, so that we can further delve into these.
Thank you. I see no more hands, any more comments? Oh, Counselor Chaplin, hi there, Counselor Chaplin.
Thank you, thank you. I wasn't fast enough, Mayor Protem, to click the raise hand button. I just wanted to pass on to Counselor Pierce and Counselor Hatfield that while we're talking, there are some fireworks going off down at Counselor Hatfield's neck of the neighborhood, so it's an appropriate conversation to be having.
Well, it's not, it's not 10 o'clock, I might just add that.
Just go right out there and check it out, see what's going on.
She has an elbow.
So I see no more hands raised, is that correct? Seeing none? City clerk, are you clear on the motion, or would you like Counselor Pierce to repeat it?
I'm clear on the motion.
Okay. Is the council ready to vote on the motion? Would you like the motion read back? If you could read the motion, city clerk, please, and then we can vote.
Sure. So Counselor Pierce made a motion requesting that the city solicitor's office prepare an ordinance for public hearing that will restrict the display and possession of consumer fireworks from the hours of 10:00 PM until 10:00 AM, and to hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance at the September city council meeting.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands raised, no more comments, we'll have a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll be voting yes. If not, you'll be voting no. Please call the roll.
Mayor Protem Bouchard?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
No.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach? Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Werner?
Yes.
Motion passes. And, Mr. Mayor, are you coming back?
Hey, I'm back.
Yay.
So now that I have revised the agenda in front of me, I now know that we're completing all the business of the council. Does anybody else have anything they want to share before we go?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
I, I should have brought this up earlier. I've had a lot of questions put forth to me recently about trees being cut on East Side Drive in Portsmouth Street, and citizens wondering why the city's cutting down the trees. It's my understanding it's not the city, it's you, Natell, that's cutting down the trees. Is that correct, city manager?
That's correct, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll intend a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Back in.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Counselor Chaplin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yeah.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yeah.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Werner?
Yes.
With that, the motion's adopted. Have a wonderful week, be good to each other, and we'll see each other soon.
Adios.
Bye, everyone.
Take care, everyone.
Bye.
Be safe.